Rebecca Douglas.
Here.
Shaquille Ali.
Here.
Ms. Lee Aiga, no, I is not able to be here today. She's called and let me know she was ill this afternoon.
All right, and now I'll ask Ms. McCoolick to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
We do have some students who will do it for us.
Back in.
So which school is this?
These are students who from all different schools. So if we would have the campers come forth and lead us on the pledge, that'd be great.
All right.
Please stand. Use the right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thanks for that. Before we move on, we're gonna take time to review our board meeting guidelines. You ready?
Sure. Okay.
Are you? Yeah, all right. And we have the request to move item 11B.
Correct.
To GF Section 8F.
8F. Here, 11B.
To Section 8F.
So which item, are we moving to where? I'm sorry.
11B.
B. Certificate of first day administrative report. Oh, okay, got it. Yeah, to come bring that up first, got it. So bring it now, right now?
No, we'll bring it to the end of Section 8.
Yeah. So it'll be after 11B.
Oh, okay. Okay. Okay, so. Yeah, I'll try. I will move that we approve the agenda with the change proposed.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we have a motion to approve, well, to approve just the change?
No, I said to approve the agenda with the change.
With the change, great. Next, we have a special presentation from U Cubed Summer Math Camp, Summer Math Camp at Stanford University. Several students who participated in the U Cubed Summer Math Camp at Stanford University this last summer will share what they did during summer vacation. Over forty Jefferson Elementary students entering seventh and eighth grade had an opportunity to work with Professor Joe Bowler as part of a research project identifying the effects of open math on mathematical problem solving and algebraic thinking.
So slight correction there, it was over thirty students, so.
All right.
Still a nice representation. So I'd like to invite Ms. Debbie Borda, who will introduce the item, and then there's several speakers.
Good evening, welcome back to school.
Thanks.
Had to close last year with me up here, and now I get to open this year with me up here. And there we are. Great. So, um.
Thank you.
We're really excited to share this work with you that the kids engaged in over the summer, and we're really fortunate to have Dr. Joe Bowler on the crew here from Stanford University to talk about the design and the data results from the work. And then we have seven of our students who attended that will share a little bit about their experiences with you as well. So just some little logistics, we were only one of two, they only had two school districts that attended and then participated, and Dr. Bowler might want to share that with you about how those were selected. The kids went for those, through those dates, June fifteenth through July tenth, except for the Fourth of July holiday, and it was really amazing in that they, they sent a bus. So the kids were picked up and dropped off at Fernando Rivera every day so that they could.
Ben Franklin.
Sorry, at Ben Franklin, I'm at Fernando Rivera. At Ben Franklin, every day so that they could attend, and they were so accommodating so that our students could attend because they had, they actually got a bigger bus so that they could all go and they could take all the kids who had applied. So it was really wonderful that they had that experience. And as Mr. Vidal has said, that we had over thirty kids that participated that are entering into seventh and, and eighth grade. And so to share the design of the program, I'm going to introduce you to Dr. Joe Bowler.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Feel bad, I'll have my bite to you, but. So yes, we, the program was really designed foremost in the program was giving students the important new brain evidence we have about mathematics, that everybody can learn math to the highest levels, we know that now. There's no such thing as a math person, we told the kids that. When you make a mistake in math, your brain grows. So we gave them all of this brain evidence, and it really meant a lot to them. Many of them came in thinking that, as many students do, if you make a mistake in math, it means you aren't a math person. So we, a lot of brain messages, the mathematics itself was very open. We did a lot of visual creative exploratory math where kids could take it in different directions. And the camp design, we had students with us for three hours doing math every morning, really hardcore algebra, we got into a lot of Algebra II content, and people said three hours of math, but we actually couldn't stop them, they didn't want to go out at breaks, they were so happy, I'm sure they'll tell you. And in the afternoons, they spent time with some of my undergrads at Stanford, couple of whom are here today. And what was also really important was the, we had a range of achievement from the students coming in. We grouped them heterogeneously, there was no tracking, everybody was in the class together. When the district came in to visit the classes, one of the things they said, some of the district visitors was, oh my gosh, you can't tell who's a high or a low achiever in here. And some of the students who weren't achieving well in school were having the most amazing insights teaching of the students. So they worked in groups, and it was very visual inquiry based math.
Thanks.
So now we'll hear a bit from some of our students, if you could advance the slide.
It's already in order that they're going to go in, so Abel's going.
Good afternoon, my name is Abel Benavides, and I will be sharing with you the process of making the camp related movies that I did at the summer Stanford Math Camp called U Cubed. This was a summer math camp that helped middle school students build confidence in math and made us realize that all students can achieve at a high level. We got free food, transportation, and iPads. All the students got into groups of five and, five or six, and one person in each group would use their iPad to make and edit their own video using an app called iMovie. This app lets the user create a movie trailer, music video, or just a plain video. The students got to choose which one they wanted, but they all had to be related to the camp. At the end of the camp, some videos were shown in front of everybody. I had a lot of fun making my movie, thank you.
Good evening, my name's Savannah Moraga, and my experience at the U Cubed Stanford Math Camp was definitely one of the most unique, amazing experiences I've ever had. Although it wasn't even a full four weeks, I think that I learned more about a certain math skill that I didn't even know existed. I learned that one of the most important things to do in math is to make mistakes. When you make a mistake, your brain grows a little and you know not to make that mistake anymore. I think that the teachers I met and the friends I made were also a big part of my experience.
Great.
Good evening, my name is Anthony Dennis, and I attend Fernando Rivera in the seventh grade. This summer I had the opportunity to attend the Stanford Math Camp U Cubed. I learned about growth and fixed mindsets. One thing I liked about the camp was we did an activity called Four Fours, where you have to use four fours to get answers, like one through twenty, like four divided by four plus four divided by four equals two, and you had to do it all the way to twenty. I would like to thank Stanford University for that opportunity, good night.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Noylan Galzario, and last summer I went to U Cubed's Math Camp at Stanford University. During the summer, we learned a lot about math, such as graphing four fours, which is making an equation only using fours and having an answer from one to twenty. Also, we learned how to see math in a different way, like seeing math in nature or reality, including spider webs and snowflakes. They all have patterns. Tonight, I'll be talking about the movies we made. The purpose of the movie was to summarize a topic we learned at camp. Some groups did movies about growth and fixed mindset, interviews about their teachers they worked with, word problems, and even simple addition. But mostly the point of it was to have fun. Thank you for coming, and I'm happy to share my experience with you at Stanford.
Today, I will be sharing some of my experiences from the summer math camp at Stanford called U Cubed. I learned that in math isn't, it isn't all about speed. Many mathematicians take forever to answer one problem. I also learned that there are growth mindsets and fixed mindsets. A growth mindset is when you want to be challenged and you want to be praised for working hard. A fixed mindset is when you don't want to be challenged and you want to be praised for being smart. One activity they had us do at Stanford was make a movie. We used an app called iMovie to create it. We were split into groups, and with our groups, we came up with ideas for what we would do our movie about. My group decided to do our movie on interviews of us telling about our favorite activity and other questions related to that.
Hello, my name is Isabelle Kintenya, I'm in the seventh grade student at, I'm in, I'm a seventh grade student at FDR. So at the math camp, we learned a lot of things, especially like about the brain, like when synapses fire, which means you're learning something or you're making a mistake, which also helps, because you can learn from your mistakes. And you can learn more from that too, because the next time you do it, you'll do it better, and you'll keep going and trying harder, even if you're trying to figure out a problem that you can't figure out, you can keep going, yeah. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Franco Sanchez, and I go, over the summer, I went to U Cubed Summer Math Camp. I learned that there's no such thing as a math person, and that when you make a mistake, that also call, you can call them synapses fires over in your brain, and that's your brain grow. We did activities, we made movies, and we used iMovie to create the movies, and it's a.
So you've been hearing about the U Cubed Camp, just a word about U Cubed, it's a center at Stanford University where we're dedicated to improving math teaching for teachers, and we have a lot of resources there, we've had over two million hits on our site in the last year. So the teachers in the district can continue with the work we've been doing, we have lessons up there and all sorts of great things. So the, this data you're looking at now is, you see on the bottom, all eighty-one students in the camp, and this shows you their scores on standardized algebra tests before they came into the camp, and you can see they range from zero, this is the raw score, all the way up to twenty-seven or so. So we had a huge range of achievement amongst the students, and this is a standardized test that we have national data on, that's an algebra test. And then eighteen days later, they took the exact same test, and we see the next slide. This is their, these are their post-test scores. So on average, the students increased by fifty percent after eighteen days, which is pretty staggering, it's not really heard of in education. And what is really pleasing to me, when you look at that data set, is you can see the improvement for students goes across the achievement range, even though they're heterogeneously grouped, students who were previously low achieving went to middle achieving, high achieving, so it wasn't sort of targeting one group at all. So one of the things we did on one of the last days is we decided to make a music film that captured the messages of the camp and has the students communicating what they learned. It's a very catchy music video, so I hope you enjoy it. Some of you may have seen it.
We've had that problem before. Yeah, the sound may not be working, it's, it's happened before. Oh, well. We will post the link to that on our, on the board agenda. It is on our district Facebook page, so if you missed it, please join and watch it there. But you can just see some of the different activities that the students are doing. You can sing along with it if you want, because this is, this is sung to the Taylor Swift tune of Shake It Off, so if you feel like.
Go and see it, but. Uh, I just wanted to say. With, we were really fortunate. Well, we'll continue with. That too, but. Compare them with other kids.
All right. Or comments.
And have.
And now you can share all, and thank.
certificates for all.
Getting ready with those, I hope I can see that. bathroom, because.
Yeah.
Make mistakes and then think.
She wants to shake.
Somebody let her. Can do it.
Abel, whenever you. And the next one's for. Doctor. Seems funny now. It's hard to move sometimes. And for Noylan.
I have one for Kathleen. Savannah. And Franco.
I almost want to mention Anthony, your father served on the school board, did he not? I know. Just for every, so everybody else will know. Anyway, keep up the good work.
So once again, thanks for this wonderful program, and I'm looking forward to find out about the follow-up that you're gonna do, and you did a good job of spending your summers learning math and having fun, so I'm happy to see all the students here tonight as well. Before we move on to the next item, if any of the parents want to take their children home, you can do that right now.
Go play with math. I'm sure they had some other homeworks in there.
Yeah.
Let's start right away. I know, I know. Is it?
That's the board, this portion of the agenda. The board on any issue. Restriction on the agenda. Discuss or comment on items in this section. Allow for any speaker as you. Have one speaker call from, actually. Mr. Sean Noonan.
Forgive me, I'm an extra minute, but Sean Noonan, I am in. Tonight, I'm a parent of a. Tobias Elementary. I'm here to share my growing concern over the vacant third grade position at Tobias and. Student teacher. With other students of some of the parents here tonight. After inquiry. Plan to hire a permanent teacher, Mr. Valente said on Monday night that he would be actively looking for a teacher. The position is not posted on the district's website, and also wasn't posted until a few hours ago on edjoin. That's two days my son's class had to. Two academic days. But I really. And felt very flat on the. That is a terrible message. First day of school is. Friendships are found. And not having a care to fix this problem. Deck. Respect. Lost. Like to share with you. For you to have a. Subsection for E. Also after. That parents. Happens to be a very. From goal of the teacher. I'll be honest with you. His class. I really don't care. That's not okay with me. Been to them so far this.
V, V R. Mother, parent.
Thank you for your time. Uh, I have a. One also at Ben Franklin, and like Mr. Noonan. This is our. Also. And just from experience, um. She. Stanford, thank. It's subs. Subs and how I'm a finger point. Falling behind again.
Linda Dart.
I'd like to congratulate all. Job. And I'm glad to know that. A mistake in math, your brain grows, that helps me out. And just knowing that. And I'd like to announce that voting season is upon us again, and we will have voter registration forums available at the back to school nights at the schools, and there will be a candidate forum for the opens, for one of the open seats on the board on September sixteenth, right here at City Hall. That's a Wednesday at six-thirty. So that's been, that evening here has been reserved for that purpose, and we hope that everyone will tell everyone and join us that night. Thank you.
Thank you. Some more speaker cards. We'll move to administrator comments.
I'd like to welcome everybody back to school, and I want to say that the summer program is absolutely wonderful, how cool for them to do that. I went to a wedding and reception at Stanford, but I would rather have gone to that camp because that sounds like a lot of fun. Um, I went to a wedding and reception at Stanford, but I would rather have gone to that camp because that sounds like a lot of fun and a lot of brain growth opportunities. Um, I also want to remind everybody that please sign up for Free and Reduced. Fill out the Free and Reduced application. Um, we are having a campaign and a drawing that everybody is entitled to participate in the drawing, whether they qualify for Free and Reduced or not. Um, much of our funding does come from Free and Reduced and we would like to get these funds so we can support all of the programs that we have and that we want to have. Thank you.
Want to thank everybody and families for their comments and let you know I'm hearing you and thank you very much. Um, we've been working very actively to build some relationships with some universities and setting up student teachers and interns to work with our district so we can build a culture of nurturing student teachers that will continue to work in our district. And that from San Francisco State, Cal State East Bay, USF, Santa Clara University, as well as Notre Dame. We've been having a good dialogue. And going to be setting up some times for me to go to the universities as well to have them come out here and meet some of our teachers at the different schools.
So I would just like to welcome everyone back as well and we have all of our students in classrooms that are district students and we're just placing our students that want to come into our district. And we also have preschool spaces at our General Pershing Preschools for subsidized preschools. So if anyone's interested, please go visit Ms. Amiga at General Pershing. And we're finalizing our Big Lift preschool classes and we're hoping to open them soon at Thomas Edison and John F. Kennedy and we have a wait list for that. And then next Thursday is open, sorry, back-to-school night for the elementary schools.
Board member acknowledgements and commendations.
Um, I just want to say that, you know, it's always exciting to be, have the beginning of the school year. Hope that things will go well and better. Um, I'm really sorry to have missed the opening day this year. It's always a favorite time of mine, but just want to welcome back all our staff, teachers and students and parents.
Ms. Brizuela.
Well, a couple of things. I just wanted to say that I was able to visit TRP to see the wonderful classrooms. And the progress is just really right on top of, I thought was great. So anyone that has an opportunity to go there to see it, you'll see that and I'm glad that they've, they've taken into consideration safety of our students at all times, which is really important during any kind of construction. And I didn't get to go to the first day of school, but I went to the second day of school. And I visited Garden Village and they were doing very well, so I was really happy about that. Um, I did receive, um, some of you know, I'm on the, uh, Bronwell Property Owners Association and I received a notice from Daily City Planning Commission about a proposal of building, um, a clean energy fuel place for the trucks that will be coming in. I guess it's the garbage trucks. And it's very close to the area where some of our students walk to go up to, um, um, I was gonna say Tobias, not Tobias.
Pauline Brown?
Pauline Brown School. And I'm concerned about that, so I am, will be giving some of the information to our superintendent as well, so he could look at it. And possibly we can attend the planning commission meeting or send a letter asking that when they leave the facility that they turn right instead of left, which would be a lot safer for the children walking. So there are times that we have to really keep our eyes open for the safety of our children, no matter what it is, not just at the actual school, but just try to keep children safe. So we'll, we'll be taking care of that. Mr. Valencia, thank you for following up on this very much. So, um, other than that, I want to say a little bit ahead of time, congratulations to Melinda Dart, who's going to be honored by a dinner at the Hyatt Friday night for all her service and work. And as you know, besides being a, a teacher and a mentor and I'm probably using the wrong terminology, trainer?
Coach.
Coach. That's it. I was getting close to that. The coach for our district and helping many of our teachers. She also is the president of our union for the teachers and she does a tremendous job. And lately, the last years, two years, we've been working so much with parents and AFT as well as the community and PTA to try and help make it better for our students. And I thank you, Melinda, for all the hours you put in.
Correspondents.
I don't have any correspondence, but I'll jump straight to comments. Um, so just want to report again, as others have, have stated, that, you know, we had a, um, almost all of the kids that we expected to show up, showed up. Um, we were, this year, only slightly under what we expected, um, which is, means it's the first year in several years that we haven't had to close classrooms at certain schools where not enough students showed up. So, um, every class that was open stays open, um, which is, which is, um, we sort of would have hoped that some of them would have closed because we would have had teachers to move to other vacancies of slots, but this year they did not. Um, so, um, and to reiterate what Mr. Valenti said, um, you know, we are working toward filling those vacancies.
Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Brizuela.
Aye.
Dr. Douglas.
Aye.
Mr. Ali.
Aye. General Functions, Item D, 2015-16 Local Control Accountability Plan Revision. Jefferson Elementary School District Administration recommends the governing board approve the revisions made to the 2015-16 LCAP based on minor clarifications requested by the San Mateo County Office of Education. The Local Control Accountability Plan is an accountability plan that requires districts to disclose how local control funding formula funds are spent to provide high-quality education programs. The planned activities were developed with broad community input through the 2014 and 15 year.
Yes, so we have to, we had some minor revisions. Actually, it was just notations of where to clarify. Um, we thought it was pretty clear, but they wanted little asterisks and things and we italicized some of the changes. The main reason we had to bring it to the board was that we had consolidated the template to make it easier for folks to read. There were guidance questions and instructions, so we cut that out just to make it easier for the public, but they said we needed to use that template and so that's why we need to bring it back to the board. So putting all those questions, so it added about another 10 pages to the document. But we, so we'll know next year not to do that.
All right.
Don't simplify. Let's take action.
Yeah. So if there's no discussion, I will make the motion that we approve the revised local, 2015-16 Local Control Accountability Plan.
I'll second the motion.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Item E, CSBA Call for Nominations for Directors-at-Large. CSBA Seeking Nominations for Directors-at-Large African-American, American Indian, and County. The administration recommends that the board considers making a nomination.
Yeah, so you have information there on this process. Um, if any board member wishes to make a nomination for any of those positions, um, the paperwork to do so is included there. And if you would get that paperwork to me by Friday, September 11th, and I can make sure that the board gets it at the following board meeting to consider making a nomination as a board. So individual board members make nominations, then the board considers who to nominate as a board.
All right. No discussion on that, right?
No.
So now we go to 11B. Certificated Personnel, Item B, Administrative Appointment, 2015-2016. The administration recommends approval of the following administrative appointment. Elizabeth O'Neill, Dean of Academics, JFK School. One MWMA, Step 1, $92,952 plus $1,100 for MA degree, effective August 17th, 2015.
Well, I make the motion that we approve Elizabeth O'Neill as Dean of Academics at J.F. Kennedy School.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Congratulations, Liz.
So Ms. O'Neill, we're glad to welcome you into the family of JESD administration, um, still part of the greater JESD family. Um, and if you have any words you'd like to share, this would be appropriate for you to come forward.
So, um, first of all, just want to say I'm very excited and grateful for the opportunity. I embrace the belief that students are, um, not mine, but ours. And, uh, this will be the chance to practice this on a larger scale. Uh, we have exceptional schools, students, teachers, and staff at Jefferson Elementary. And wherever I've been at different schools, I've been very happy and I feel very wel, although I'm Miss Tobias, I do feel very welcome at JFK. And I also, just on a separate note, I've had the opportunity of doing some, teaching some of those UQ lessons this week. They are fabulous and the students love them. I didn't get to do it in iMovie, but, um, they, they love them.
All right, thanks.
So thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. Now can we find our way back? Would be 9B. 9B, right?
Looking forward to, so Item B, Approval of Contract Between Soul Shop and Jefferson Elementary School District for Positive School Climate Support. The administration recommends the approval of the contract in the amount not to exceed $141,020 with Soul Shop for providing workshops, staff trainings, and parent nights in all Jefferson Elementary School District, elementary and middle schools. For the 2015-2016 school year as specified in the 2015-2016 LCAP. Representatives from Soul Shop are here to, to discuss program components.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for having us here. My name is Daniel Bruno. Um, I am a facilitator, uh, and trainer and development manager for Soul Shop. Is my colleague Melanie Hobson. Melanie's our Director of Operations. Um, at the end of my, uh, short presentation tonight, um, we'd like to answer any questions you might have. Um, I'll defer to Melanie on many of those, I'm sure. Um, but before we get started, I also wanted to acknowledge Stephanie Martinez for all her help in orchestrating this, uh, relationship. Um, as an organization, we're very excited about this partnership. Uh, we have been around 15 years. Soul Shop was born in San Francisco, um, in the year 2000. And at that time, uh, the organization was founded by a fifth-grade school teacher and his wife, who worked for San Francisco Unified School District, um, as an intervention specialist. And the two of them, um, had a vision that children should be able to come to school and be free to be themselves and be safe. Um, but we know that, uh, that's not always the case. Uh, started with two schools in Dublin, which quickly became 12 the following year. And, uh, as of last year, uh, we work with nearly 90,000 youth a year in over 150 schools. Uh, we have not done an ounce of advertising, so our organization has grown by word of mouth. And that word of mouth is because of schools like yours here in Jefferson. So in, uh, 2006, George Washington adopted Soul Shop. Uh, the following year, Thomas Edison joined. And since then, four other schools have also signed up on Soul Shop, with Soul Shop. So, uh, again, we're excited to, uh, this year partner with all of the schools in the Jefferson District. Um, the quote there from, uh, former principal Jennifer LaRocque, I think really speaks to, uh, why we have spread word of mouth is because the program is effective. Um, both teachers and principals agree. So I'd like to spend a little bit of time on why Soul Shop, why we started this organization, why we feel it's so important. Um, every single day, there are children all over the country, all over the world for that matter, who are staying home from school, um, not for illness, uh, necessarily physical illness, but, um, emotional because they're afraid. Uh, these are children who have been bullied or teased. Uh, these are children who, um, have been victims of rumors. And, uh, we believe that, um, there is a solution to this problem. These statistics show just how serious the problem is. And as students get into middle school, uh, the problem only gets more serious. Suicide continues to be the leading cause of death for children 14 and under. In our middle schools, um, bullying gets a lot more complicated. When I was growing up, as I'm sure is the same for many of you, uh, bullying was getting maybe pushed or shoved or hit or intimidated by someone physically bigger than you. Um, but bullying is also verbal, it's emotional. Um, but these days bullying can be covert. It's almost, uh, hidden. And so we know that technology is a big part of this. The solution is not to deprive children of technology. I think that that would actually go against their learning. But we have to actually address the issue of why kids bully, why kids tease, why kids say and do things to hurt others, why it is that someone might use a device to, um, actually humiliate or embarrass someone. We believe that the core of it, um, is how children feel about themselves. So if we don't intervene and we don't find a way to help children, uh, feel good about themselves and have positive relationships with each other, with themselves, with their families, and with their community, uh, the damage is not only to themselves, but the damage extends to the schools and it also, of course, affects the homes. If these situations are not addressed, we have a bigger problem in the world. A lot of research supports that the role of victim, bully, and bystander tend to stay consistent through time. We hear all the time from adults that come out of the professional environment telling us stories about bullying in meetings and other professional environments. We also know that, uh, kids who were punished harshly tend to continue that in their adulthood. So something's got to be done. We believe that we have a solution. I'm not going to stand here and tell you we have the solution, but I do believe we have a solution. We partner with schools throughout the Bay Area to teach social, emotional learning, intelligence, and skills. Teach kids to identify feelings and then help them to have positive, um, a positive plan for how they deal with their emotions. What this looks like in the elementary school, uh, is we have what we call grade-level workshops. This is where a representative from Soul Shop comes into the school. They work with one grade level at a time. And through a 30 to 45-minute workshop, students, um, learn a skill. They also get to practice and role model or role-play rather that skill, uh, in the room. And then there is follow-up curriculum for the teachers to then, uh, take back to the classroom. We also have a peacemaker training. This is, uh, where we train students to solve, help solve conflicts on the playground. This is empowering young people to stand up for justice and to help solve problems. This is, uh, right in line with the restorative justice practices that the district is, is taking on. And then we support the community, uh, making sure that the teachers are speaking a common language, that they know how to reinforce the tools that we're teaching, but then also the parents, um, albeit Tobias tomorrow night, by the way, uh, to share some of these skills, um, so that the parents can reinforce this common language at home. The common language that the teachers and the parents and everyone will then be speaking, that is something that creates safety. And when the, the students know that, uh, if they do have a problem, that there is or are rather resources, not only in the school, but at home for them, they're more likely to reach out. I want to touch briefly on what the middle school program would look like because there are some distinctions. Uh, we don't have the peacemaker program because quite frankly, seventh graders roll their eyes at it. Um, but what we do have is we do have the staff and parent trainings so that we're supporting that community. We have grade-level workshops that are appropriate for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Um, we have classroom workshops. Classroom workshops are where we work with one classroom at a time, so that's 30-some-odd students. Uh, the classroom workshops are a really important follow-up because it creates, um, a safe environment for people to participate and speak up more than, say, in a room of 90 kids like we have in our workshops. have in our workshops. And then we teach the staff to run weekly class meetings. These only have to be fifteen or twenty minutes, but it's a very important tradition so that young people know they have a time and a place that is not about academics, but is about their social-emotional well-being so that they can bring the attention to an adult something that they're concerned about. Maybe eighth graders picking on seventh graders for a particular reason. When they voice it in the circle and their peers support them, then we can, we can start to address the problem and support each other. I wanted to close by just acknowledging that in the twelve years that I've been doing this work with Soul Shop, I continue every day to meet people who are touched by the work that we do. I stand before you today as a survivor of bullying myself, which is why I was drawn to do this work. So with that, I wanted to acknowledge the Daly City Jefferson Board for taking us on to do this good work. Honestly, I have a lot of hope for the future. As a father myself, I really appreciate that you've taken this on as a priority. Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
At this time, Melanie Hobson will wow you with her knowledge and charm.
There's a reason I'm standing here.
Any questions you might have on our program?
I actually have a question.
Yes, please.
How do I approach where fines parent?
Pardon me, excuse me. You have to direct your question to the board. Fill out a speaker card as well.
Breaking rules, I apologize.
I see, or catch him in the lobby after the meeting.
Alright, thanks. Well, before any questions, I want to just acknowledge Melanie and I go way back. She's actually, I would say, one of my mentors and helped me to develop and polish my repertoire of peace-building work. So it's good to see you here today.
I would just say we work together. That's generous.
Any questions?
I don't know, that was a fairly comprehensive presentation. It addressed the questions I had, which were somewhat about how, you know, it just, you know, incorporating into the classroom, so it's touching every student. And clearly, that's what we're looking at, is something that will, you know, not an after-school thing that gets a few kids, but involving all of them and reaching to all of them. You know, and I think that our district has always taken bullying very seriously and I've had cause to appreciate that, so I'm glad to see this going on as well.
So the stuff that you deal with the students, is it during school time or after?
It is indeed.
It's during school time?
Yes, it is.
So you may have noticed during the presentation, he did identify that about six schools were participating in this last year. And it just became clear through the LCAP process that it was time for the district to take this work on and supporting all of our schools to be able to do this. And so that's, we began conversations with them during the springtime to see if it could be possible and worked that into our plan. And for the first time, we're doing it in all of our schools instead of just a subset, so.
And that's in the ICAP budget, right?
Yeah, the LCAP.
I say ICAP, LCAP, sorry.
I had just a couple of questions. So I was happy to see that there's a wide variety of activities for each site, but I was wondering, how are those various components coordinated at each site?
Yeah, that's a good question. We're actually in the thick of that right now.
Alright.
Yeah, the scheduling is quite a feat that is to be undertaken. So we typically work with either the principal or assistant principal to schedule the programs. And it's important that we time everything effectively. So we have a grade level workshop for sixth graders. It's important that we have the follow-up classroom workshop within, you know, forty-five days.
Yeah.
Because the idea is that we're trying to continue a conversation that was started in the initial meeting. So to take on all fourteen of the schools in Jefferson required us to hire new staff this summer. They went through extensive training. They actually started with us in the late spring and worked with us all summer. And so those new hires are helping us to have the infrastructure to serve all of those sites. I apologize for any inconvenience, but we did hire one of your substitute teachers who was not poached, but a young gentleman named Pablo, who's working at some schools. He approached us and was just moved by the work. And so we thought it fit to not only hire Pablo, but to place him in your schools.
Right.
Some of the students will have rapport with him.
So I think that was actually my only question.
So do you come back to us and let us know how it's going?
There we go.
There's something you can answer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was here just in case you asked anything about data or evaluation. And what I can say is that we're a research-based program. And when we first heard that we were going to have an entire school district, we were kind of excited and we were hoping, oh, we could do some pre and post-data work here. However, last week, when we met with Stephanie, it became clear that, to your credit, you have so many awesome programs that you've implemented in this school district that it would be out of integrity for us to claim credit for everything all the programs are doing altogether. So we can't, we can't show our causality on changing everything. However, what we're working with Stephanie is that even though you have playworks, which is on the playground and after-school, and you have second step and PBIS, all of that stuff, it's awesome, good for you guys. Soul Shop has been at some schools longer than them. So our goal with Stephanie and whatever data, technology people you have is to see if we can find some sort of story in there that we can share with you specifically about Soul Shop.
Alright. I actually do have another question. It's kind of a technical question, I guess, but have you considered or are there school climate committees at each school? And how would you, like, work with the schools so that, I guess, because I saw in one of your slides that the students are self-selecting for one of the programs, which I thought was awesome.
Yeah.
But how about still the whole school, how's the whole school going to be empowered to take responsibility for this?
That's a wonderful question. So the peacemakers do self-select, so those are the conflict managers. And there is a liaison on-site that is, that we ask the school to select from the staff. And they get extra training to make sure that they can support the peacemaker aspect of the program. But I think you're speaking to something that actually is maybe just in general to support the whole program at the school.
Yes.
And so I appreciate the question. And I think it's something that Stephanie and I should probably consider because perhaps a committee of sorts might be a great way to just to make sure that the program is sustainable and that the follow-through in the classroom and so forth is happening. So excellent question.
Alright, thanks.
Be sure to follow up on that.
I just want to read actually a statement, so we have no more questions for you. But this is from the California School Board Association. And it's an article called "How Boards Change School Climate." It says, "Boards should, one, establish the current reality of school climate, measure and discuss; two, set clear direction for school climate; three, align school climate improvement with other key systems; four, provide resources to support improving school climate; and five, create partnerships." And then it says, quote, "Boards, when establishing or revising policies related to school climate, can ensure clarity of expectations and consistent accountability. Although school climate is just one of eight state priority areas identified in the LCFF statute, improving school climate may be a highly effective overarching strategy for improving student achievement and district performance." So thanks for contributing to, you know, what we're trying to do here in our district.
And that's sort of why I want to get some reporting back.
Yeah.
Because I want to see, aside from just the aspect of the child about bullying and things like that and feeling better self-esteem, how is that going to affect, will that prove that that child will learn better and stuff? I mean, there's, we want to see that it's a whole picture.
Very hard to track.
So somehow we do some tracking on that. Thank you for bringing that closer to what I want to say.
Yeah, this last, I think at least in the last two years, the board has received sort of school-based reports on Soul Shop implementation. I think Thomas Edison has done a school-based report. I think last year it was Westlake. Westlake. Were you at Westlake last year?
Yes.
Yeah, I think they came and, you know, they talked about how it works, how, from the student's perspective, how it works. And so we can make sure to schedule a district-wide presentation toward the end of the year.
We commonly hear anecdotal and feedback. And one of the things that we consistently hear is a reduction in suspensions and discipline.
And that part's great. So I just want to see how it really affects, I want to hear that the child is doing better because of all the others of going away.
Yeah.
And that we can track.
Sort of. Very hard to tease out cause and effect.
Yeah.
We can do hard numbers on how many students are being seen in the principal's office or suspended. It's a little harder to know when a student's performance improved.
Well, it wouldn't improve because if they're staying home because of bullying, they won't be staying home anymore.
So Ms. McCulley.
Which means their education will go higher.
Ms. McCulley can speak a little bit to some of the data that we are gathering on this. You know, it's hard to know how much this affects academic performance. We believe it does and everyone believes it does. But what affects academic performance the most is what we do in the classroom. But this allows students to be in the classroom and feel safe. So Ms. McCulley, do you want to talk about that survey?
Sure. It's part of the LCAP metrics, actually, is in the school climate goal, the positive school climate goal, we're looking, of course, at suspensions, expulsions, and attendance rates. But then we're also having a student survey and asking students how they feel about the school climate.
Okay, good.
And so that's another metric for us to measure, and that would be more kind of anecdotal, but data to measure how students feel at the school.
Thank you. Well, it sounds like a partnership.
Yes, it does.
Congratulations.
But we have to make a motion here.
We have to vote on it.
One of the reasons why we asked you to come, though, because this is going to be the first time we've had something school district-wide, you know, coordinate. And it's a big contract as well. So we thought it would be good for you to be able to, I guess, showcase what you're doing here, so other districts may be watching as well.
I have to say that that really, that caught my eye was the amount of money.
Exactly.
Because it's true. But thank you for coming. I appreciate it.
Fourteen school sites, it's a big event.
Yeah.
It's a lot of work. Well, I would like to make a motion then that we approve the contract between Soul Shop and Jefferson Elementary School District for positive school climate support.
In the amount of?
In the amount, not to exceed one hundred and forty-one thousand and twenty dollars.
I'll second that motion.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye. Sounds good.
Also, thanks to Ms. Martinez for facilitating that.
Yes.
Business and financial procedures, item B. We have a presentation on district general obligation, Measure I bonds. Ms. Chris Erhardt of Kegen Corporation will provide a presentation on the opportunity to issue district bonds to fund upcoming construction and facility improvement projects under Measure I. Good evening.
Good evening. We also have some hard copies of our presentation if anyone would like some. Good evening, Board President, members of the board. Thank you for having us here tonight. As you mentioned, we're here tonight to give an update on the district's bond program and also to talk about the next issuance of bonds from Measure I. So I'm actually going to turn it over to my colleague Andrew Twann to cover the first part of the presentation.
The district, the district has successfully passed two bond measures. Measure H for fifty-two million in two thousand and one, Measure I for sixty-seven point five million in two thousand and twelve. Measure H has no authorization remaining and Measure I has thirty-two point five million remaining authorization. The district also has not issued any capital appreciation bonds to date. On page two, we have a history of the district's assessed value. The AV in two thousand and fifteen, sixteen was eight point nine billion, which was five point five percent growth from the previous year. And you may recall, when we were doing the Series B financing, we had assumed a three percent growth rate in two thousand and fifteen, sixteen. So we actually exceeded that. Good for the district's taxpayers. On the bottom right, you'll actually also notice that there are some growth statistics. And I just want to highlight that the twenty-five-year growth rate for the district was five percent. Here you'll find the history of municipal bond interest rates. To the left, we have a fifty-year history and to the right, a history for the past year. You'll notice that although rates have been volatile, we are still currently near historic growths. Next, we have the district's bonding capacity, which is the amount of bonds the district can have outstanding at any point in time. The district currently has a bonding capacity of approximately thirty-seven million, which is sufficient for the remaining Measure I authorization.
So as Andrew mentioned, Measure I was approved in two thousand and twelve for sixty-seven and a half million dollars. To date, we've issued two series of bonds, the first in two thousand and thirteen, the second in two thousand and fourteen, both of them for seventeen and a half million dollars. And those were issued entirely as current interest bonds, which are the type that pay interest semi-annually. With that, we have thirty-two and a half million dollars in remaining authorization under Measure I. So we're here tonight to talk about the next issuance of bonds, Series C. On the top left, you'll see a chart that gives some details on each of the issuances that we've issued to date and also the ones we're projecting the issue of Series C and Series D. I'd like to highlight the repayment ratios in there. We like to look at repayment ratios to make sure we're complying with a new law that just went into place, Assembly Bill one eighty-two, which said that your repayment ratio cannot exceed four to one. And you'll see that we've historically been far below that four to one cap and projecting to do the same on Series C and Series D. The way that's calculated is you're taking your total debt service, which is principal and interest, and dividing it by your principal. So we're very happy that we're far below that and getting good interest rates for local taxpayers. On the right-hand side, you'll see a projected tax rate chart. And those bars represent each of those series of bonds. And in aggregate, you'll notice that we are right at that thirty-dollar tax rate, which was approved by voters. And this is all assuming some pretty conservative assumptions. Down on the left-hand corner, interest rates between four and three-quarters and five and a quarter. If you were to issue bonds today, we're probably around four percent. So we have some cushion in there to make sure that by the time we are planning to issue the last series of bonds in two thousand and sixteen, if interest rates rise, we can still get the bonds issued. And we're also using some pretty conservative assessed value growth rates, three percent and four percent. And Andrew mentioned earlier, the district's historical average at five percent. So again, we have some cushion. And here we have just a projected debt service schedule. So these are the actual principal and interest payments for this prospective seventeen and a half million dollar issuance. And down on the bottom, the repayment ratio estimated right now to be two point oh six to one. So again, far below that four to one cap. And on the final page here is just our timeline, assuming that we are moving forward with this Series C issuance. A lot more detail in here than you need to see, but the main points I'll highlight is that we're planning to go to Moody's and Standard and Poor's to get the district's credit rating updated. And we're also going to have the Samatero County Board of Supervisors adopt a resolution that allows us to move forward. So next steps, before you tonight on the agenda is a resolution and a number of form documents. The main point of that resolution is first to approve the financing, the Series C financing for seventeen and a half million dollars. It allows district staff to move forward with the financing and take the necessary steps to complete it. And finally, it approves all the form documents that were also included. And here with us tonight, we have Nick Huer from Stradling, the district's bond counselor. So if you have any questions on those documents, he, I'm sure, can answer those. And that's what we have for you. Are there any questions?
Thanks.
I have no questions.
Questions? I have a question for Mr. Vidalis. So what will the rest of this money pay for?
Well, we need to finish TRP. We still have all of Phase Two and Phase Three to do. So that primarily will take up this next series to complete that. And then we will be, you know, once we determine the actual cost of that project, we'll know how much approximately we have left and we'll begin to think about some of the other district priorities that we have. I just want to say that I'm very happy that we have only current interest bonds. I know that a couple of years ago, maybe when we were looking at Series B, we were told that we might need to consider some cabs perhaps in Series D sales, and nobody was happy about that. some cabs perhaps in series D, uh, sales, and nobody was happy about that. So I think, uh, the, the market has been good to us, um, and we hope it continues so that we don't, we don't want to be stuck in the middle of a project with not enough money to finish it, so.
Right, definitely.
All right.
Yeah, I don't, do you have any other?
Do I hear a motion?
Uh, can I get back to my-
So you would, it would need to be a motion on the second, uh, item after that one, which is just approval of the, uh, which is a, a resolution and approval, approving of the forms of the bonds.
I was looking at the wrong one, all right. So we'll move on to item C. Thanks. Resolution number fifteen dash zero eight dash twenty-six. A resolution of the Board of Education of the Jefferson Elementary School District, Samatello County, California, authorizing the issuance of Jefferson Elementary School District election of two thousand and twelve general obligation bonds, series C, and actions related thereto. That's the same thing.
So, so, and rather than approving to do it, we're just approving the resolution.
Right, so this-
To do it.
Correct. Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve resolution fifteen dash, um, zero eight dash twenty-six, uh, of the Board of Education and Jefferson Elementary School District, Samatello County, California, authorizing issuance of Jefferson Elementary School District, Samatello County, California, election of two thousand and twelve general obligation bonds, series C, and actions, and that we, and that we ask that, um-
And the actions related there too.
Well, it just sounded like it was leaving it empty, and actions related there too. Does that sound right?
Yeah, that's, yeah, because I think that's, that's the approval of the bond and the other things that have to be approved to go with it, if I'm understanding-
Sort of like we could have said it all, but, okay. You all know what it means.
Okay, and I will second that.
All right. Is this a roll call?
Yes.
Roll call.
Mrs. Brizuela?
Aye.
Dr. Douglas?
Aye.
Mr. Ali?
Aye.
Okay.
Very good.
So now it's done.
Good to know we get to continue with our construction.
Yeah, we can finish.
Put a roof on.
So item D.
I wish it was just that.
Thank you so much to our, our partners, both at Strad- at, um, at, um, Kegen and, um-
Stradling Yoka.
Stradling Yoka and, and, um-
Yes, yes, thank you very much for coming and, and sharing with us.
All right, item D, budget update. The administration will present an update on the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen and sixteen budget.
There it is.
Like, one and a third.
Exciting.
So what we're here for is, um, you pass the budget, we passed the budget in June, and then the state passed the budget, and we are changing our budget accordingly to match the revenues that we will be getting from the state. Oh, I'm sorry, I just left them sitting there.
This requires glasses.
So it's just a-
Yes.
A quick update on, um-
Just in case.
What happened with the state in passing the budget and how it affects the Jefferson budget. So, uh, first off, Governor Brown has established and maintained, year after year, a fiscally conservative position. Um, he regularly recognizes revenues low. He has paid off the deferrals, um, including this year. Um, he has made threats of mid-year cuts in case revenues did not come in as high as anticipated. Um, he's, has a regular, um, uh, position of funding one-time funds instead of ongoing funds in case revenues don't continue. Uh, so he's very, very conservative, um, there's all these different reasons, um, and, uh, the supporting of Prop- Proposition Two, Proposition Thirty, and, um, he brought in the LCFF and the LCAP. And so, um, we've been riding along with him, and we continue to do so. Prop ninety-eight is how, uh, school districts get their funding, K through fourteen. And for the fifteen sixteen year, um, K through fourteen gets sixty-eight point four billion dollars. K twelve, sixty point four billion of that, sixty-eight. Um, most of that money, uh, well, first off, that's seven point six billion dollars higher than, um, in fourteen fifteen. And that is a fourteen point three percent increase, um, that is going to education. A lot of that in fourteen fif- is for fourteen fifteen that, again, he had estimated the revenues low, and as a result, fourteen fifteen came up in five point four billion dollars higher, and fif- and thirteen fourteen point six billion dollars higher. So the current year is actually one point six billion dollars higher than the previous years. Altogether, that's seven point six billion dollars more funds this year. So it, for K twelve education, these are the different areas that he has funded. Uh, the majority of money is going through to fund the LCFF gap, which we benefit from. And, um, a lot is in, uh, one-time monies, again, the one-time discretionary monies and one-time educator effectiveness monies. And he's also paying down, the final deferrals are being paid down. So also Prop ninety-eight, um, a little bit of shenanigans that the state likes to play is, um, they've taken general childcare and they've, which is a non Prop ninety-eight, uh, program. They've taken the money from that, a hundred and four, the cost to fund that of a hundred and forty-five million dollars, and they've decided they're going to fund that out of Prop ninety-eight. Now technically, what they should do is they should re-bench Prop ninety-eight accordingly, because it's an expense that wasn't in Prop ninety-eight before and now is. Um, but they don't, they didn't do that. So that basically means that Prop ninety-eight is now funding something that was out of it. They've put it into, they've, they've added it into the state preschool and to consolidate it, but they're, they're not adding that extra money. So that's really a loss to education, um, charging us for it but not giving us the money for it. Uh, and that's something that's been happening through the years. Uh, this one, they keep doing it, it adds up. Uh, a hundred and forty-five million might not look like a lot, but when they keep doing it, it, it does add up. Um, what I really want to talk about is what wasn't addressed, and that's STIRS. Um, as you know, originally STIRS, for many, many years, all the years that I've been in education up until last year, um, the district's portion of STIRS was eight point two for, two-five percent of, um, our certificated staff salaries. And, but because STIRS was not fully funded, the governor wants to fully fund it, and it's a, it'll take thirty years to fully fund it, and, um, the state is putting in a little bit. Um, the certificated employees are putting in more, and by far, the district is paying the biggest amount. And so, instead of eight point two-five percent, by the time two thousand, twenty twenty-one comes, we'll be paying nineteen point one percent. That is a hundred and thirty-two percent increase. So it's not a hundred and thirty-two percent of, making, meaning a thirty-two percent increase, it is a hundred and thirty-two percent increase over what, um, school districts have paid historically. Um, in two thousand and twenty-one, when, um, we pay that, if it was based on today's salaries, um, that would be three point four million dollars extra that the district is paying for STIRS on an ongoing basis. That means every year, that amount of money has to come off the top and go to pay just that additional amount of STIRS. So, eh, to kind of help you see what that means, at eight point two-five percent, the cost to the district was three point nine percent of our total general fund expenditures. Three point nine percent was spent on STIRS. When we are fully paying that nineteen point one percent, nine point one percent of our expenditures will be for STIRS. That's almost one-tenth of every dollar, almost one out of every ten dollars we spend will go to paying STIRS. Um, I do want you to know that in our multi-year projection, we include the STIRS as it grows, um, so the, the increased costs. So last year, fourteen fifteen, the increased cost was, was eight point eight eight percent. And this year, I think it's, uh, I didn't write it down, somewhere around ten point two-five percent, I think, something like that. But it is included in our multi-year projection. But I did think this is important because we do want the state to recognize that this isn't an extra cost. So though we're getting more money, we are paying these additional expenditures out. So this is the, um, the budget, uh, fifteen sixteen budget and the multi-year projection for three years that was adopted, that you approved in June, um, our adopted budget. And as you can see, um, we have a surplus for the current year, and then we have deficit spending of, um, or strategic spending of the reserves of, um, approximately two million per year, um, in the following years. And this is a conservative, we, we budget conservatively as long as we can. Uh, we'll budget conservatively. Um, our fund balance goes down as a result of this six million dollars worth of strategically spending reserves. And so this is what happens to our cash. It's okay, though, um, we will, the, the LCF funding will catch up, um, provided we don't have a major downturn of the economy. And, um, we do have expenditures that we could look at should, um, a downturn happen. So from the adopted budget to where I'm going to take you today, I want to show you what kind of changes were made. Actually, not that much. Um, the, uh, LCFF gap funding was reduced from fifty-three point zero eight percent to fifty-one point five two percent. A lot of, some of that was to do with that re-benching, when they re-benched and put the childcare into, uh, preschool. That money came out of the Prop ninety-eight money, and so, uh, can only actually use one dollar in one place. So they had to reduce it, and so we lost, um, this is really our basic loss, two hundred and three thousand. You see at the very bottom, it's two hundred and eleven thousand, it's really coming from that. Um, the other eight thousand, eight thousand dollar loss is a combination of this one-time money. So basically, they reduce the discretionary one-time money from six hundred and one per ADA to fif- five hundred and thirty per ADA. And so that's a loss to us of four hundred and thirty-four dollars. They shifted that over to a different one-time money, um, educator effectiveness. We already have these programs that the funds would be spent on. So it's, it really truly is a wash, except for that eight thousand dollars. Um, and so when we add all, add those all together, we have a decrease in our budget.
I'm sorry, Ms.-
Yes.
That's four hundred and thirty-four thousand, right?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, I forgot the K's on those.
Yeah, so I just wanted, I wanted to be very clear there on that. So you're talking, you were looking at-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so the bottom, right.
Reduction of six hundred and some thousand, four hundred coming back.
Now, I have people proofread this for me, and sometimes none of us see that the K is missing, right? So thank you, um, for noticing that, I didn't even notice it.
So really, really quickly, the, the loss, or this, um, decrease is based on revenues not coming in as, as you expected?
Correct.
All right.
Correct. So, um, mind you, we got a whole lot of revenues, and this is a small portion to lose.
Right.
So, um, I'm quite pleased with if it wasn't going to follow, um, what the governor wanted. This is pretty cau- pretty darn close.
All right.
So after putting these in, I've done a, we've got a new multi-year projection, which is, um, very little in changes. Um, basically, the first year has, um, two hundred and eleven thousand dollars less, which is right here, right here. So our end balance, our, our revenues are less, so, um, we have a little bit, it's less of a surplus. Um, and in the following years, we have a hun- it becomes a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. So when you look at all the years combined, it ends up being seven hundred and one thousand dollars, because it's ongoing. But we're still going to get, um, the fact that the LCFF-
Gap.
Funds, the gap funding was lower, that means we have more that we're going to get in the future.
True.
So, um, our, our cash balance looks a little bit worse, but we're still okay. And I want to remind you again, this is with the conservative funding level in those out years. So, the, we use, uh, school services conservative one instead of the CDE, um, more optimistic one. And then it will adjust at the end of the year, whatever actually happens, so, uh, year after year. So this, I'm saying, is not used because this is the, um, more aggressive, um, gap funding level, as you can see right here, thirty-five point five five percent, thirty-five point eleven percent, uh, nineteen point eight eight percent. When we use that gap funding, uh, see how this changes? Instead of being two million dollar loss per year, it's half a million, and then positive thirty-two thousand, and then about three hundred thousand loss. Um, so it, I'm going to say, it's going to fall somewhere between those, somewhere between the conservative and the optimistic. So, um, our cash in this case looks like this. Though I think our cash will probably be just a little bit lower, that much likely. But, um, I feel confident that, you know, we're using the conservative, um, gap funding percentages for the out years is, um, giving us most likely the worst-case scenario, most likely. So, um, do you want to talk about the economy and the current conditions on the economy? And as I said at the beginning, Governor Brown has shown a year-over-year fiscally conservative position. But if you listen to him, when he talks about the future, it's all optimistic future. So, um, which, I'm, I'm glad he's conservative now, I'd rather not have to make huge cuts. But with the optimistic future, um, we have to remember that Prop thirty is going to sunset. And, um, part of it is December of, of two thousand and sixteen, which is only a year and four months away, uh, five months away. And, um, the rest of it will sunset in December two thousand and eighteen. And he's not expecting to, um, to make the sunset further out. He thinks the economy's going to improve, and I hope he's right. Um, but that's that optimistic future thing, and it might not be quite as rosy as he says. And I want to just talk a little bit about China, the second-largest economy in the world. Um, I think we all know that the yuan was devalued by the Chinese government, um, just very recently. Um, the government also lowered the, um, interest rates as well as, um, the reserves, the bank reserves, um, requirements. And their stock market has, um, gone down a lot. Uh, they had Black Monday this last Monday, eight point five percent loss, which was the biggest loss since, um, February of two thousand and seven, biggest one-day loss, followed by Tuesday at a seven percent loss. Um, since June, they have a forty-two percent loss. Um, but mind you, June had gone up, but it's forty-two percent below what they had in June in the stock market. And, um, and it's really, a lot has to do with their exports. Um, they, their economy has slowed down a lot, their exports are slowing, um, are, are slowing down. So by devaluating the, the yuan and, um, allowing, allowing the banks to reduce their rates, uh, both the interest and the, um, reserves, they're hoping to be able to make cheaper products and export cheaper products. And when they export cheaper products, other countries, um, can't sell as many products, and that includes the United States. So it, it creates a very unstable world market. And, um, as a result from this, we can expect that the Federal Reserve is going to rethink, um, increasing the interest rates that were supposed to actually be, expected to be increased in, um, September next month. It'll probably hold off a little bit, is my guess. And then, um, our-
Time's up.
Our, um, US stock market is, um, is very volatile right now. Uh, you know, that Monday, it went down, and then it came back up, and so we're just kind of bouncing around. And, um, and what I'm trying to say here is that the California economy- And, and what I'm trying to say here is that the California economy is not insulated from the rest of the world. You know, we depend on the whole rest of the world. And so I, I just wanted to show you that, because it's all rosy, it's all optimistic, but it's never always just gone up, and people usually don't plan on a downturn. And so that's one of the reasons why we like to budget in a conservative manner. So that's, that's it, any questions?
No.
No, any questions, Ms. Swimmer? Nope, thanks for your presentation.
I'll be back at the last, next meeting with the unaudited actuals, so.
All right, looking forward to it. All right, thanks.
Is that for this one?
Melinda Dart, AFT.
Yeah, thank you. I do appreciate that look at the economy. I did hear today that in spite of what we're hearing about China, their economy is still growing five to seven percent, so.
Yep.
It may sound gloomy, but yet there is still a lot of growth there that would be even enviable in, in our country. So I know that it's very volatile, the effects of the tech boom haven't all been positive in our area, as you know, and the cost of rents and the high cost of housing have made it difficult for many people in our community. And our, ours, our community particularly, I believe, is very vulnerable to that, being next to some very wealthy areas, and now having people move to our community and the rents are getting higher. And I wanted to commend the board for having signed on last year to a resolution to encourage corporations to pay their fair share of taxes in our state, because as, as you heard, as Ms. Kessler said, it is true that Prop thirty is, is going to sunset, and that will really affect us in our district as far as revenues coming in for students. So we're going to need to really work together to find other strings of revenue to, to replace that. Thank you.
That's true.
Thank you, Ms. Dart.
All right, any more discussion on the budget?
No, no.
I'm just glad that we are budgeting in such a way that those cuts didn't force us to go scampering back to cut anything.
Well, we seem to be increasing, which I'm happy about, so.
Well.
More services.
Yeah.
It's very important. Okay. So now we are.
Are we at item F?
Yes, we are. Can't wait.
Item F, information tech system specialist. As a result of analysis and identifying district technology support needs with the proliferation of technology devices across the district sites, the administration recommends the creation of information tech systems specialist position and the adoption of job duties for the position. The information tech systems specialist will provide support for district-wide services and critical equipment, including servers and network components and management of the Google Apps for Education accounts, as well as centralized management of apps on district devices. The information tech systems specialist implements, manages, and maintains services, applications, and infrastructure, and resolves escalated service and support issues. All right, do you want to talk about this at all, or?
I think the, that explains primarily. We did include expenses for additional support in the information technology department in the LCAP, and.
So funding's there.
So the funding's there, so in the late spring and throughout the summer, we sort of pinpointed exactly where the needs are. And I think you see that this position is responsible primarily for remotely managing some of these devices that are in our schools. How many do we have now, Ms. McCulick?
We have over a thousand Chromebooks and like eight hundred iPads.
So we no longer have to do that one by one, so we, we have a system that can do it remotely, and we can wirelessly download apps and do a lot of things, so, but that's, that's, was on nobody's plate before last year. So we, we now feel like that's where the support's needed now, and then helping the information techs deal with sort of level-two issues that, that they're not able to solve immediately.
So right now, we have a job spec in front of us. Are, are we creating this position?
Yes.
So it kind of didn't say it to me here, so I just want to make sure. So we're creating a position, and we're approving the job specification, and then it's going to go to the.
Back to the personnel commission.
Personnel commission for the qualifications. Because we don't do qualifications.
Right.
But it sort of sounded like we had some of that here. Experience, that's not our portion of.
Job description.
Job description.
Just, well, I understand that, but the entire thing is a job description. So I just want to make sure for anyone that's looking at this, realize that we're only approving the duties and.
The title.
The title, the title, and the fact that we're creating the job.
That title.
Okay, so.
Let me too have that straight.
Yeah, that title is a tongue twister. In the technical world, it would be called a systems administrator, but we didn't want it to say that, because they, they would not be an administrator. And in the education world, administrator means something different than in the technology world, so.
That is true.
We call it a system specialist, because it's.
Right.
Closest we could come to it without confusing people.
So if there's any other questions, we'll move it along, I guess. Any questions?
Question, just a comment, that I'm glad that we're, we're still improving all of our tech services.
We're coming from a long way back.
And glad that we have the money there, too.
We have one more year of a good year, but I think year three, they start to break, so we'll see.
Being positive, we can get more partnerships and more things.
It's okay, they need upgrading multiple times a year, so, you know, software and stuff, so you got to get somebody in there to do that. So I'll make the motion.
Oh, I want to make it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Okay. Being this, it wasn't, okay, I'm just going to make the motion. The motion is that, that we approve the creation of a position titled information tech systems specialist, and to approve the job specification with the duties and abilities, and that we would then pass it on to the personnel commission for, for their work on the. Qualifications.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Okay, we did our job.
Board member comments and reports and reflection on board meeting guidelines.
Wait, wait, there's one question, this one I want to ask. So do we have a salary in mind for this? Because we are able to, to present to the commission what we feel is, and then they tell us whether it fits into the, so do we have that yet?
We're, we're in the process of making comps right now. And they will come back to the board, too, for approval of everything altogether.
No, I realize that, but it's nice when we let them know what we would like to give, because it's, it's you guys' job to make sure we're doing it right.
Correct.
Okay, so if we could get that, I would really appreciate it.
Comparisons are made, being made right now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're done with that.
You're on top of it. Yeah, we did. Do you have any comments, reports, or reflection on guidelines?
I do not. I think we did a great job with our guidelines tonight.
All right, Ms. Swimmer.
Yes, do we have to say what it was, or just say?
Have to.
No, well, we did fine. Actually, I like to say sometimes, we're, we're looking at all of it, we're doing fine. Yeah, thank you very much.
It's nice to have the regular reminder at each meeting what they are, because we get to remember.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
The one that I focused on tonight was we will work toward the future, learning from the past, and there were a lot of comments made this evening that we will pay attention to, even though we weren't able to respond verbally tonight. And that's it. So persons wishing to address the board on closed-session items? Or you want to say something else?
Well, no, you, since you said, I was going to say, you picked the same one I picked.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so you're thinking more alike or something.
That's, I guess that's a good thing.
Yeah, and I have to agree, we, we met that one.
All right, great. And we have no speaker card for the closed-session item, so at this time, we'll take a short recess, and we will convene in about five minutes to our closed session.
Do you want to mention that we will be in memory of?
Right now.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So later, we will adjourn in with the moment of silence in memory of Rita Casey, mother of Carolyn Casey, principal of Garden Village Elementary School.
Five minutes.